Good evening, I'd like to call the regular bill. I'll go by please. Uh, date is eight twenty first order. Can I have a little call please?
Yes. I have a rally. Mercy. Little House. Frederick. Eric.
Here. I will leave it here because I'm not sure, um, the problem is still in that regard. We can't even.
I'm holding the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion for a reverend meeting minutes? It is April fifteenth. Support. All right, Jackson, support back those ideas in this session. Kingdom, call about Jackson.
Yes.
Mercy.
Yes.
Little House.
Yeah. Yes.
Yes. I will let the record reflect that on May seventh, nineteen twenty five, there was no meeting due to lack of forums. Um, table items, I need a motion to remove the table, never Jones, uh, to the parking rack position. Yes. Call go please.
Yes.
Mercy. Little House.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. And I have a motion to find Denver Jones to the parking rack position. Um. Not coming she, I don't know when the term expiring is, so. I believe so. But I'm kind of cheap.
Well, that's kind of right.
Yeah.
And it's like it wasn't on there either. Oh, she's done.
And I was allowed on your part. Not on my firm. When you're going out, always does the eight. Um, yeah, I said, you know, I filled that in, you just said no, so. I can do that.
Yeah. Sure. Yeah.
What, from Harrison?
Oh, yeah. What's the date? My rehearsal expires, if you go find it.
For, hold on, I got enough for everybody.
Okay, I'm going.
I'm prepared. I didn't. She's.
Um, all right. All right. All right, I want to make sure this thing happens. So. We could do eleven eighteen twenty five. Yeah, that's, um. The number is within ninety nine. Eleven eighteen twenty six or eleven seventeen twenty seven. There is actually three things here. You have to know exactly what you can do. If you were in it, I'll give it.
Three. Three bacon.
Now. Honorings miss expires eleven eighteen twenty one six. So, term expiring eleven eighteen twenty two six.
Is it now?
Yeah. So, it needs to stay the unexpired term of. Move by Filipowski. Could I have a support? Supported by Christopher. Any discussion?
Yeah, sure.
Yes.
Second or third straight being the United at the forum. Trying to play in these hundred year celebration as we are not playing in last four years, so.
How are you doing?
Two, three. Um, how many people are on the discussion right now?
Um, one, two, three, four, five, six. Six.
Six, only there's constitute four.
Well, we have two that are off due to surgery. Um, lately you've had three showing up for me, or four.
Maybe five.
They have a forum. So.
Cheers.
Yes.
So, we have five, we have six.
They have six.
Because one is not showing up yet. She's out of surgery now, she's coming back as Linda. Had a similar experience. She's.
Twenty six. She's not sworn in though.
Yes, she hasn't been sworn in yet. Um, she will be kind of, she will be. Still right now, even if we don't have them show up right now, we still have five.
No, 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 we don't have five.
Yeah, they're out because of surgery, so only three show up. Tracy, you're ready? And Linda Adams.
They're still on the, they're still on the, yeah.
Right, so you guys want this under celebration or not?
There's nine positions on this.
Yeah, so five have to be here for a forum.
And that's three babies on this initial. So what I'm saying there is you got, you got Mark, you got Ken, you got Ken.
Matt.
And Matt, that's four, that's four right there. Five, and Matt's working at, uh.
You need five, absolutely. Dan, you were on the commission, go by you. Through the chair. Through the chair. Yes. Go ahead. Dan, you were on the commission, go by you. There weren't patterns when you had left on that.
Oh, yeah.
In your forum, you get things done. You know, you wanted a hundred year celebration and without a forum, things don't move forward. So. Any other discussion? Kingdom, call go.
Jackson?
No.
Mercy?
No.
Little House?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Eric.
No. All right. Um, communications, public safety.
Good evening. So, uh, first on the, uh, agenda, um, it was a quote from Code Three, uh, for services for meltdown days. Um, so I have a request, uh, motion to approve the quote for nine thousand seven hundred dollars and forty four. Nine thousand seven hundred forty four dollars. Um, this includes four days of Code Three armed security guards. Um, they are going to be Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. They'll have six guards on Thursday. Um, they'll be staying overnight, watching all the equipment. Um, and then they'll have ten officers on Friday, ten officers on Saturday, and ten officers on Sunday. Um, their functions are assisting the meltdown police by maintaining order, enforcing rules, um, reporting any suspicious activity, assist with crime control, um, they'll be on patrol bicycles, patrol ETVs, but mobile command center, all the security guards were body cameras. Um, this is the third year that we're going to be requesting their services. They gave us the same quote as they did last year. Um, we had one incident last year that we arrested somebody, um. We, we asked this because we are low on, um, manpower. We have dropped our manpower down from three officers to two. Um, and the fireworks is, as you, you guys all know, it's a, it's a big event. A lot of people there, um, reserve officers, Michigan State Police, they're not guaranteed to come. If we hire them, they are guaranteed to be there. So last year, I think we had three Michigan State troopers, two reserve officers, and another three from here. So, I don't think you can, you know, put a price tag on the safety of our ships, so that's why we're requesting.
Two chairs.
Can I get a motion out of court?
Please.
Thank you. Moved by Frederick, supported by Filipowski. I don't have no questions.
Yes, um, how many agencies have, uh, been contacted?
Uh, we've contacted, uh, me personally or other officers. We've had, well, way coming, Michigan State Police, um, and their one.
And now we were, and that's what we have, that's what we have regarding the elevator days prior to the year, two, three years ago.
Yes, again, but they're not guaranteed to come. Michigan State Police, even I spoke to a sergeant last year, and he said they were very low on officers. We asked them if they could come, and they only sent three officers. So, we are not guaranteed really anything with them. Because we're not paying them, even though we do have a mutual aid contract with them, they're not guaranteed.
Two chairs.
Yes.
Let's prove, did you want? Put it up, did you?
No, we didn't.
Oh, we talked.
No. No, because we.
It's not with the council for, yeah, for them.
Well, we hired, we fired them for, this is the third year that we fired them. They, they grew all down river as well, I mean, they could hire sailors, um, small voyages.
Through the chair, yes.
Um, I pulled all of the payments that we've made to them. In twenty twenty three, they did it for fifty six hundred dollars.
Okay.
In twenty twenty four, it was seventy nine hundred dollars. Now this year, the quote is ninety seven hundred dollars.
I spoke to Mike, and he said it was the same exact.
It's not the same.
Okay.
I remember.
Order.
I pulled all the information, I pulled the invoices, and I pulled the payments. It's not the same.
Do you have those with you?
Uh, you can call up the meeting minutes, it's in the meeting minutes. Okay, we'll do that. But.
Also, is this, uh, years past that we offer overtime and stuff like that, and we get out of the cost?
Well, see, so the overtime is, yeah, so we're gonna have an, we're gonna have to have at least one officer overnight to watch the equipment. Um, and then they're gonna have six on, uh, Thursday, ten on, I mean, that's like, there's no way we can send ten officers. Um, and we only have maybe, maybe four officers. So, yeah, so there's gonna be overtime.
Two chairs last, uh, last million days, how many close officers did we have on duty out? What's our current number of long post nurses right now?
What, see, that number varies a little bit because we have eighteen officers that are currently, that, that can work, that are not on workman's comp, or they're not, um, on duty disability or administrative.
And you forget the last year one.
I, I don't know those numbers from last year, I don't know the exact numbers. But I do know that we did get an officer of all duty, and we lost four, we lost three officers and an officer of all duty, and they were unable to work. Uh, an officer at COVID, she was unable to work. Um, we were, I, I can only remember off top of my head, maybe eight officers that were down. And they were very, very, very low. And thankfully that they were there.
This year, we've got more officers, we've hired officers.
We've, we've hired more officers, however, that eighteen includes, um, four that are on FTO, which they have to be with some, another sworn officer. They cannot be by themselves, including the chief in that as well. Um, he is safe. Um, Crystal, I include in that, she's on a surgery leave, so I don't know exactly when the date she's coming back. So that's why I say that that number plus away.
And chief, so who's my message is, because we got a lot more, we got a lot more officers now. And then in past years, we actually did not rely on any outside agency to cover up the elevator days. We hired Michigan State Police, or, uh, Michigan State Police, the Valley Police, and Wayne County, which is here tonight. And, uh, we saved those, well, because we had low officers those years. And because of COVID, because of the things that we were, uh, trying to, we hired this agency. And by, our threats, uh, our threats, uh, inquiries, uh, it's went from fifty six hundred dollars all the way up to almost ten thousand dollars. And the thing is that they're not pulling it out a bit. They say we're not going to any other agencies, so.
Well, to, to be, to be honest, I don't know of any other security companies that, that handle chronicles. Do you, do you have some?
That's not as secure right now.
Okay.
Is there?
Okay, that's a little, I mean, yeah. If you guys, if you guys want to hear that.
We have a motion on the floor.
I didn't, we've gone with them for three years already, just why, why now? Is it, is it a price, is your problem with the three?
Well, once again, it's, while it's, it's increasing the price, I mean, come to the mic tonight, you said, hey, it's the same as it was last year.
That's what we, I didn't have.
Once again, um.
Okay, we're moving on.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, there are any other discussion? Kingdom, call go.
Jackson?
No.
Mercy?
No.
Filipowski?
No.
Frederick?
Yes.
Eric.
No.
Okay, um, next on the agenda is the promo closure for Grayfield and Allen. Um, so June eighth is the day of the fireworks, you like that, uh, a motion to close Grayfield and Allen from PPM till midnight?
Soon.
Move by Filipowski, supported by Jackson, any discussion? Kingdom, call go.
Jackson?
Yes.
Mercy?
Yes.
Filipowski?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Okay, um, so the next on the agenda is the policy changes for the gym. Um, after doing some research, we had, um, officers that were only allowed to use the gym, sworn officers. Um, we reconvened and we spoke with the, uh, person that donated the gym from Planet Fitness. Um, and they said that supplemental officers are allowed to use the gym, except they can't be open to the public. So we like to change, we did change that through the, um, Public Safety Commission to include, um, police personnel or, um, personnel for, uh, police department, including animal control ordinance and motor carrier personnel. And the reason we did that is, uh, a couple reasons. Um, one, the main one being is that the gym is used for physical exercise, um, and physical fitness, and all three of those are included in those job performances. So we'd like to include that and have those officers for animal control ordinance and motor carriers all included.
Hey, motion on go please?
I'm going to motion, someone's a person.
Thank you. Frederick? Move by Frederick and move back to the last. All right.
Two chairs. So I thought the last time you raised a hand, it was whether it's all or the department. And, or, or either or, just sworn officers. So it was either all or, or just sworn officers.
Okay.
You want Jessica to come on?
Yeah, yeah, Jessica. Yeah, so she, she was, um, she's been very instrumental in, in, um, going through this gym process. Um, so, yeah, we just probably just some confusion, we did talk to the chief, like I said, we did reconvene with the question of own Planet Fitness, and they said that he is open for that supplemental officer, including motor carrier ordinance and animal control.
You do, yeah, this is the only producer, also, has, what the council, have you had a copy of that? From Planet Fitness, so that we can make sure that this is, so we can make sure that this is under the guidelines of what I do, so. You know, my dear.
Very, very nice.
So, yeah.
And the thing, the thing, the thing we did get into the office, but I'm not aware of the change. I, I, I was under the impression that it was only supposed to be sworn officers. And, and then, uh, assistant chief, uh, our team that did come to the safety commission and indicate they had spoken to people at Planet Fitness, and they were okay with adding, uh, animal control, wingmaster, and ordinance.
Well, unless it's more, it's more officers, as we discussed before, full hire steam, and then our ordinance officers and our, and ordinance officers made sense. Because you guys, um, come out sicking, you carry firearms, you carry limelight, you carry stuff on your person. And that was one of the main reasons why we needed to get that gym secured, and that sworn officer was going to be the group that was going to be using that gym.
Okay, yeah, okay.
I'm not sure of the exact protocol, so if I'm speaking on a turn, I apologize. So, commissioner, can I do have a short, a short paragraph that I could, that might explain something? Oh, and then after which I can, I can distribute copies of the corrective policy. So, the entire gym came about from, from a grant that I pursued through Planet Fitness. So I've been with the projects since inception, really, and all the way through. The liability waiver I offered, the policy I offered. So, these issues with the policy are due to my shortcomings and inbreeding, okay? I should have split here as a little more, and been a little more specific. So if anyone helps me, which is a couple minutes of your time, I'll, I'll, I'll be what I, that would explain things a bit more. Thank you. During the Planet Fitness gym donation process, it became known that the gift was intended only for the police department. They have made other such donations to agencies in the past, each agency was advised that the equipment was meant for their use only. In the course of drafting a policy for the gym, it was originally stated that members of the police department would include animal control, ordinance, and motor carrier personnel. The drug officers was thus defined as not to be sworn members, but also to include the supplemental personnel. Some confusion arose last month as to the question of authorized use for officers resulted in a change of the policy to exclude supplemental personnel and apply to sworn officers only. It was my belief at that time that only sworn officers were acceptable under the Planet Fitness guidelines, and that their donation was predicated upon this specific definition. Excuse me. I conducted further research into the matter and consulted with Planet Fitness, learning that they admitted that only police personnel could be allowed to access the gym. The definition of police personnel was left to be established by the department itself. The mistake then is in the use of the term officers. The correct terminology should have been written as police department personnel. Accordingly, the policy has been corrected to include motor carrier, ordinance, and animal control, and all authorized users are now referred to as police department personnel or simply personnel. As the primary author of the policy, I apologize for the time that has had to be taken to clarify the mistakes I made when writing the original policy, and I hope we can pass that revisions be accepted and the policy approved. I have a corrected copy of that policy, very good.
Okay, through the chair.
Yes.
Um, I have requested several times the actual paperwork from Planet Fitness. From them, not from my department, not from, that I never know.
They don't actually have a policy? I admitted one of our application that you filled out.
Or some other applications.
Okay, so there's no paperwork or anything from that specified. So there's nothing specified, and you're saying now that you're changing it to be police department personnel?
Yes, they just now that, that we can set the definition for police department personnel.
Okay, police department personnel is anybody on the payroll for police department. Probably, obviously, of what, secretary, bureau.
They, they, it's City Hall, we already said that, that's from City Hall, so they're not City Hall, they're not police employee.
Oh, they're not.
See, the chair, I would like to respond to that, because when she first walked in there, Tara.
Okay.
You said that she couldn't work there because she had to take care of some business. Um, well, she is clerical, well, but she said she's gonna be on the lean system, she's in here with us, so there's a little, I, I guess, I see her being police personnel, looking at this and having to.
Can you see?
That's all.
Sure.
According to, um, the table, any person can hold under that department based on police department personnel should be allowed to use it.
Well, we, but we've also, he's, we did, we didn't hire an administrator, that comes from City Hall, and he's, he's, you also, you did set your, your.
No, exactly.
Just, just with any.
When he said, or heard him work here, because, so that didn't matter with her.
You do know crossing guards.
No, 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 she won't be working on them.
But, again, the reason for the gym is for physical fitness, the crossing guards, and they.
They don't need physical fitness.
They don't need physical fitness and performance of their duties. For, for handling that, for handling that.
They're standing on their feet, looking for children across the street, they.
Okay.
I think that it should be everybody or nobody. You're including part-time seasonal personnel in your things, but you're not paying for the owner.
So listen, so you're telling me a crossing guard is going to need to use a physical and performance of their duties as opposed to an animal control officer or an ordinance officer that might have.
We don't employ animal control officers. We employ ordinance officers that also do animal control.
So, excuse me, everybody, if I can answer. Are you, are you, are you suggesting then that the full definition should include the crossing guards and the clerical for just personnel?
Everybody on the police department payroll for that department. They're listed as employed through that department, they should be included, they're police department personnel. They should all be included. You shouldn't be there, like, if they can choose who you're gonna let use it and whom you're not. It's either foreign officers or everybody.
Ma'am, actually, this, this, to approve a policy goes to the Public Safety Department, they've already approved it.
We technically have to come in.
It doesn't even have to come to the, no, it's everybody, it does not have to come here.
It does have to come.
No, it doesn't.
The only thing.
Did you charge?
The only thing that doesn't come to council is choosing through you. Everything else has to come through council. They make the resolution, and then we have to either deny or concur with what they've done.
Ever been policies in the past that have been approved by council?
Yeah.
Police department policies?
Yes.
Of, of every single policy. Okay, did you guys filter the revisions of it?
Yes.
Okay.
Every policy, every revision, they come here.
Two chairs.
Rizzo, do you have something to say?
This gym was for officers, it's, it actually got named for Sahid. It's a place for us to get together. Um, not for you guys, not for the cross lady. She said, how dare they use my name? How dare?
Who?
She actually wanted to come here and call you out. How dare? I have no interest. Tara told me the same exact thing, I have no interest in, but it's just the point that you guys are doing this just gets against the principles. So it doesn't make sense, it's embarrassing right now. Right now, and what's going to happen?
Point of order.
That's it.
Exactly.
This vote, and let's see who votes against it.
You, point four.
Let's see who votes.
Hold on a second. Okay, everybody good? Go ahead.
It's not that anyone is the police ready.
Just vote, just vote.
Because, you're not. It's not that, we're trying to make sure everything is in order. We've been telling you this over and over again, we're covering ourselves, make sure everything's in order. That's why we keep asking to see the original contract. We keep asking to see the original, the, uh, original, um, uh, the original, uh, yeah, yeah, was that? No, no, no. The, um.
So, sir, I, I, I've heard everything that we got from Planet Fitness, all, all the, all the signed forms?
Yes. My, my problem, the problem with this is, it's like, this, this, why is it such a big issue to approve everyone that's under the department? I don't understand that.
We don't want them.
They're not gonna come, if you, you said they don't have any interest in coming in, they don't have any interest in coming. Just include them to cover ourselves, that's it. It's, it's no big deal.
So.
It's no big deal.
So, I don't understand what the big deal is about it just being.
Why, why? Okay, okay, if that's the case, then how does a ordinance officer?
Oh, you just said it, ordinance.
Yes, sir. We went on, we said physical, this.
I don't get sure, no one is respecting why free for our.
You know, I'm saying, I, I, so does a crossing guard, so does anybody. That's what I'm trying to tell you, that's, that's what she said. I'm just saying, it's not just a department, I, I.
What's the point? I don't, I don't think any police department has crossing guards using their gym. Some people, they know that even certified, uh, they don't even have policy. This company has, okay, they have a policy.
And actuality, listen, in reality, and, and we're supposed to go, we're supposed to go and forth with him in the, in reality, ordinance should be given under the department. They should be on DPDW. So, what? That's, that's, that's reality.
What?
Well, that's, so, I'm just saying, let's just do something, there's no. Just, just get, just get the ball rolling, let's just.
No, no.
That's in the department.
With your side. If I could, if I could make some comments to answer to that. Okay. First of all, I'll get the unpleasant part of it out of the way. There was no specific, like, application or anything. I was looking for funding, and as a joke to a friend, I said, Google has the answer to everything. How do I get funding for a fish gym? And it produced this video that showed that Planet Fitness had built a gym for DPD. I don't want to come there. I got this CEO's name from this particular video and emailed him. And to my surprise, he got back to me within two days and said, sure, we'd love to do that for a moment, Dave. I was just asking about a grant process. I said, hey, if, if you guys have a grant for which we could apply, that would be great. So there is no original grant application, that's, that's the first thing. So there's no paperwork from where it originally. If you'd like to see the email from two and a half years ago, I'm happy to show that to you, sir, or forward it to you, okay?
No.
But, and then, and then from that point, we, it just went on from there. There was, there was no paperwork produced until the donation. There was, there was no paperwork produced until the donation occurred, at which time the city had to sign off on it, the department had to sign off on it specifically saying, "Yes, we took receipt of these machines. They give us an inventory with all the serial numbers and everything. They needed some sort of tax form, I'm not great with tax stuff, so I'm not really sure what that was. That was produced by the city and given to Planet Fitness." That's all the paperwork that exists. That's number one. That's not what it's used, that's the issue. This is a multi-part, this is a multi-part, so, so your patience just a little bit longer, please. I have no personal issue whatsoever with crossing guards and clerical personnel being included. I have no problem with that whatsoever. Ordinarily, departments that have gyms will include the police officers from the new hires up to the chief of police, any civilian dispatchers they may have on site, and their ordinance, animal control, which usually, even if they should be under a different division, a lot of places, they carry them on the police department because in many cases, they're radio dispatched and on 24-hour call, which is the case with our businesses. So, as far as the definition for the word police personnel, I have no problem personally with expanding that to include them, but that's a decision that's out of my hands. I am not the chief or the deputy chief or command or anything, I'm just the person who wrote the policy and wasn't clear enough with it. That's all.
So, if, if that is the case, that there isn't any original grant, any kind of...
Correct.
That's the case.
It's an understanding of who they do and do not, because you see, Planet Fitness is a business. So if they donated a gym and everybody in Melvindale was open to use it, well, then there goes a potential opportunity to do business, right? I mean, they, they collect fees, they run a business, they profit, they, right? These donations, first of all, all the equipment is used. It's all equipment from Planet Fitnesses that have been upgraded and everything like that. They do the initial maintenance and everything on that, they, they install it, they ordinarily... Let me see if I can take it back a little bit. Their original, their original commitment was just to provide the equipment. We would have had to have gone and picked it up, prepped the space, installed the equipment, maintained the equipment. After Mo Saif was killed, they decided they wanted to do all of this extra that they've done with the paint, the lighting, the flooring, the transportation installation in his honor for us, okay? So, their gift already was generous, and then they went above and beyond after his murder to kind of do something for us on his behalf. I have to confess with, with, with all of the ugliness that has surrounded this in the past months, I'm, I'm sorry I even inquired, really. It's, it's gone to that one buzzer because it, it just, there's so much opposition to the smallest things sometimes. It's wearing me down. I really don't know how much longer I can be under police officers.
That's it.
None of you. And, and that, that's, that's the extent of... And I'm gonna excuse myself for this, please.
All right. Let, 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 let's, let's do this, let's open it up, all, all personnel, police personnel, okay?
No.
It's like, it's a public spectacle. Why don't you guys, when we're writing policies, come in and join us? So we don't have to get up here and go through this, wasting everybody's time. So why don't you guys come in when we're writing these policies and help us out?
Through the chair? I don't know if you can table this. We're not...
No.
How much is a crossing guard's equipment weight?
Pretty sure there's a motion already on the floor.
There's a motion, we'll see.
No, there's actually a motion on the floor already. So, so we're gonna go ahead and call the votes. There's a motion, no, we're gonna go ahead and call the votes.
What do you mean?
I didn't hear the discussion.
Because you talked a lot.
Well, I've asked to be represented or asked to be observed in a couple times, you know what?
Because you wanna interrupt me, you wanna interrupt me.
I gotta interrupt you right now. Can I have the floor?
Sure.
Okay. Through the chair.
Are you finished? Are you finished?
Through the chair.
You knew.
Go ahead.
Hey, order. Go ahead.
What's my name? Go ahead, who? Pull the record.
Go ahead, Mr. Marcy.
There you go, thank you. Um, with that being said, wasn't, wasn't there a grant for $250,000 that you applied for two years ago? What, was it two years ago? Yeah, sorry, I'm asking.
Through the chair, we were in appropriation in the state of Michigan, and we had the engineers do all, and the gym was gonna be in some locker rooms where it was already not in there.
We had this gym designed so we were going to two locker rooms, there were between the four locker rooms and then the, and the hobby would be in the park. That would be very, that would be very, that was a very secure area. For the security that they mentioned to us last meeting about there are fire alarms, that's why they had to have swipe badges to go in there. Um, it was very viable, but they had security because they are armed police officers of our city, okay?
Okay.
So we okayed almost, what, $10,000 worth of stuff last meeting for this facility, that's supposed to be basically, we had charged the city of Melvindale, okay? There was grants that were put forward, or appropriation put forward, to turn, and plus we've got a lot of money for the field house, okay? Which I don't know what's happening with that because we put a roof on, we did some other things, I gotta get some coffee, because the field house from the outside don't look any different than it did a year and a half ago. Sadly, we were gonna utilize some of that money to make a state-of-the-art gym. Now, we didn't know it just had to be for our police officers, our DPDW, asky workers. If people in this, in the, in City Hall itself wish to use a gym to better themselves, that's within earshot, so you go out and drink with lunch or after work, that would be, uh, something that would be, in my eyes, non-discriminatory about our workforce, okay? And everybody could go use it. And that was, that was appropriated, I don't know what happened to it, I know I physically handed, I physically had, excuse me, I got the floor. Rich, you got the floor, you got the floor. I physically handed...
You're not gonna be rude in this.
No, 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 but you know what?
That will come right off.
Please, please respect me, I'm respectful. Okay, I appreciate it. But with that, I physically handed plans to the police department because this was brought forth a long time ago. And it was designed by Ray Parker, which is our, um...
Our engineering guy.
There you go. Where did those plans go and what happened? Because right now, physically, my concern with the whole idea that we have down there is, is that it is the, the physical building that we have that in right now. And I understand what it works, I, she, she, she worked her butt off to get this, but you have our electrical room in there. You have, you have...
I understand that you showed her that room.
I, well, we showed, they, they were talking about putting a plant in there, and we were trying to come up with it, but I actually had plans drawn up, if you want to say I, the body had plans drawn up for a state-of-the-art... Ray Parker designs Planet Fitness for Planet Fitness, okay? He drew up extensive plans to have those locker rooms taken care of. There was gonna be an entry doors put in those locker rooms, and the back door was locked. Now, there's a problem with having one entry, it's a confined space, you only have one entry throughout any time. So the back doors were gonna be able, if officers had a problem while they were in there, whoever was using the facility, they would be able to enter into the field house by a, a push door, but it would be locked to the field house. This would alleviate all of the alarm systems that are there, because it would have, it could have its own alarm. It's a state-of-the-art set building. What happened to those points? And why did that not go, why did that not go forward? Because it was $250,000, Rich, probably, yeah, $250,000 for donation point? What happened to that?
I know, I know.
Okay, well, and once again... All right, well, and once again, like I said, now...
Who did get those plans too?
I did, I physically handed those plans to, that's it.
Okay, I know nothing about those plans.
Because they were, they were supposed to be, they were supposed to, they were supposed to be some form of... Me and, we heard the chief, which at the time of, uh, Joe, and they were doing the grant, working on the actual...
And she left, she couldn't handle it.
Okay.
She, she's like, over free gym.
Through the chair. The only issue I had was it would violate any kind of language in the grant. If there wasn't any grant...
There you go. This is, this is, this is pretty bold, but... So through the chair, what is the motion we have on?
It's, it's revising, it's certainly revised policy.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Through, through animal control, weight master, and ordinance. That's, how much the motion was, and that's what the second was?
It's not animal control.
No, that's what was said.
Oh.
And the motor carrier, animal control, and...
Oh, yeah. So, are you amended?
We, yeah, we already amended it.
Oh. No, 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 same.
Yes.
Include everyone.
I amended to include everyone.
Oh, no.
We already have a motion for it. So you have...
Yeah, I got my mask moving.
So you have, you have to say...
I have, Patrick's made a motion and Phil Poskey supported it.
Through the chair, that's not... So what's the motion, include everyone?
By, one plus two, the chair, your, uh, ordinance officers and...
Motor carrier.
Motor carriers, and they take it off when they...
They've gone to start in.
They are sworn officers.
Correct.
Why can't the terminology say sworn officers, which would include that?
Through the chair.
Yes.
It was.
It was, but there was some issue, and...
That's why we gave it to the person, I don't think it was sworn, but he is sworn.
So, both ordinance officers and the motor carrier have been sworn in, they are, they are technically considered sworn officers.
Like a manual...
A dumb vote for them.
To approve the policy, the terminology, all sworn officers of the Melvindale Police Department.
Mind your support?
Yes.
Did you get that, though?
We can't go.
Okay. Are we good? I'll vote.
Jackson?
Yes.
Marcy?
Yes.
Phil Poskey?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
Next other guy is the motion to approve, uh, the quote for a bolted flash upgrade for $4,337.74, sent before Senate. Uh, this upgrade is for six new radios that we purchased, we are low on radios, we need to purchase them. This is through, uh, the same company that we use, Herpomer. Uh, this is mandatory, so you can have this flash upgrade so that all the great ones are capable of downrange. So...
Support? Moved by Marcy, supported by Patrick. Any discussion?
Yeah, through the chair.
Yeah. Is, are these the six radios that we authorized to purchase back in October, at the second meeting in October, with the grant money that I think Scott made a motion? It was $39,000, some change, we were purchasing six new oral radios, that quote from them is $35,000 and included the Q card upgrade. I'm quote from $39,000 that we paid for the grant money, and anything over that $35,000 quote for the radios was supposed to be used for, what was it, Scott, printers, hard? But that $35,000 quote that we had for radios included, hoorang.
Okay, I'll have to look into that because when we had six new radios, and again, like I'm transitioning to chief call, I don't know anything that happened in October, so like, so we took the radios down there, they said they needed that upgrade.
I still have a copy of the quote, if you need it, I can email it to you.
Okay, perfect, yeah, yeah, we have that.
Through the chair. Chief, uh, how long do those radios last, you guys? I don't really get lots of sorts.
Oh, I mean, I've had my radio for eight years.
Yeah.
Eight years, yeah.
So, and you pay down and you have it refurbished? I have a real lot of...
Correct, yeah, especially if we're getting this bolted flash for all the downrange departments operating.
I won't tell.
Okay, so I'll have to look into it.
Do you want to raise the motion? Who's gonna check?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm... I'll have that through tomorrow.
Okay, um, there is...
Through the chair.
No, we don't need to, they go with the...
So we did get a, a quote from, uh, the next other guy does a quote for new purchase, new handguns, um, it's a distributor called CMP distributors. Uh, this is for, uh, handguns, we purchased the amount of $24,000, uh, and forty, $24,043. Um, we haven't purchased handguns, um, we started purchasing the, our 40-calibers back, um, 2000 times, we've had them for about 15 years. Uh, we're trying to transition to nine millimeters, um, and Lieutenant Robin, he is one of our, um, his qualification instructors, and he, we're the first they got this quote, so he's gonna step in and talk about why we need the nine millimeters now.
Good evening, everyone. Lieutenant Robin. Uh, so as Deputy Chief has mentioned, we are indeed of, uh, I'll call it an upgrade, because we are indeed of it. Uh, I am in communication with, uh, a distributor called CMP, uh, she was gracious about to send me the quote, we are currently looking at, it includes, uh, a portion for buyback for what we currently carry. Uh, but a lot of our officers have expressed interest in, uh, purchasing that, so to speak, for themselves. Uh, so, that amount that you're looking at at the very bottom, I believe, is five thousand something, that can sum up all of the officer's payroll. So what we're asking for here is, uh, uh, this whole upgrade, give or take, we're talking about 25, 25K. Uh, and it's, it's like a one-time investment, uh, we're not gonna be needing, needing them every year, so, once we have reached, two, the term changes obviously, and, uh, briefly, I will talk to you about why that's the right move. But when we talk about capital, and then we get, uh, we can, I had a discussion about it a couple times. Uh, we're talking about an investment that is gonna be good for many years of years to come, and I believe it would be a good investment for, uh, for, uh, credibility, uh, training, cost effectiveness, and, uh, all these two things. So, yes.
Can we get a motion on four, please?
Oh, yeah. Very motion to, uh, to this quote, or, you know?
Moved by Marcy, supported by Phil Poskey.
Okay, so it's, uh, those went through Washington.
Oh, are existing handguns? No, uh, for, most of our officers have expressed interest in purchasing them for, um, for...
Buyback.
Buyback, yeah, basically, they're, that amount is gonna be heralded after completion.
Okay.
Um, which is the same amount CMP offered us for a...
I was under the impression back a while ago that that was that... Chair, okay? Make, all the same question? Did you expect?
Oh, you're a legal purchase?
Do that, but also ask for you buying.
Okay. All right.
Oh, yeah, I remember that.
Okay, so you want...
So a civilian cannot purchase that.
Thank, thank for you for the civilian.
You're a civilian.
But a sworn officer, I have a full number, I purchase a handgun for the department.
Yes, uh, they are handful, uh, approved, and this is a total, this is a total, uh, transition to the old part of the department. Weird, like completely depleted of...
All right.
Also, we're, we're still carrying the 40-caliber ammunition, very much out there right now, uh, and most of their manufacturers, the FCI went to, I remember this back in 2014. Uh, everything starts at a federal level, eventually triples down to the local level, so, which is a safe place, followed suit, and switched to nine-millimeter handgun back in 2015, and we're kind of experiencing that, people are impacted, or a lot of the, uh, local departments are also holding because of just, uh, cost effectiveness, so...
So, hold on a second, so who was that that switched in 2014?
The FCI, after, uh... The FCI, after, uh, almost thirty, thirty-five years of collecting empirical data. Can do the conclusion that as far as, uh, internal, external, internal logistics. Uh, the three caliber that they examined, which is forty caliber, forty-five ACP and nine millimeter. So, uh, internal, external, internal logistics were almost identical with modern ammunition.
Okay, and then my other question, has this been approved by public safety?
So we do have a policy, um, for, um, carrying forty calories. So we'd like to get it first approved, that's what she says, first get it approved, because if we change the policy, the nine millimeter, then it will all be a violation of the policy. So we get it approved first, and then we can change the policy.
Just?
Yes.
So ammunition you currently have, now what would happen with that? And this quote doesn't include ammunition as well?
Oh, well, our existing ammunition, we can, uh, we can resell them or. Sure, no, we, we do have, we do have a indoor range and our officers want to train more. So, uh, those were bought a while ago and, uh, paid for and everything. Uh, we can certainly resell them or just use them for training for what we carry right now. Uh, the firearm that we're trying to switch to is a Glock Model forty-seven, they call it MOS. MOS stands for modular office system. So, uh, if you walk into a gun store nowadays, that's most of what you want ten years ago. You will see most modern firearms are equipped with an optic or come ready with an optic cut. And there are several different cuts of, uh, of that, of that measurement, which, uh, is that, yeah. Uh, some of them are called Delta Point Pro, some of them are called RMS, some, some of them are called RNC, some of them are RMR. They're just different footprints of cut. What they do is they allow officers choice, for the buyer to choose to mount whatever optic they choose, as long as it meets industry standard. Which is my goal as a firearm instructor here is that we're going to give that option to officers. If they wanna run the old school iron sights, which there is nothing wrong with that, but if they choose to go and purchase an optic, as long as it meets the industry standard, they can easily mount it without making major. So the Glock forty-seven offers another advantage because when it comes to compatibility with likely current areas. Holsters and, uh, other support equipment, uh, the Glock forty-seven is gonna be very comparable to the Glock Model twenty-two that we're trying to carry. So we're saving a lot of money in that way because we don't have to re-vamp everything, we don't have to change everything. Uh, most officers will be able to carry the current holster that they currently carry, the current magazine caddies that they currently carry. So it saves us money, uh, and, and a lot of training too, because anytime you move to different equipments, now you have to exhaust a lot of time, resource, uh, into retraining the officers. So this is gonna be an easy transition, uh, that I think it will be, it will be beneficial to, for our departments. Uh, I've been heavily involved in our firearms, uh, training, uh, for past five years. When I went through the, uh, death training school, uh, there were fourteen students from, from all over the country. Uh, I shot with people from Missouri, people from Florida, uh, I believe I had an officer from Nova Scotia, Canada. So, uh, I was one of, only three officers who were carrying something other than an English. Uh, it's gonna be, uh, the Glock forty-seven is gonna be standard, uh, seventeen plus one. So it's going to give us a little bit more capacity as well, uh, easy shootability. It's very comparable, the weight is very comparable because it's a polymer frame weapon, that's the, that's the, uh, strong point of the Glock pistol. Uh, because of, of the polymer design, it is, uh, it's a lightweight, easy to maintain, easy to build out of the system. And this is your training.
Sure, uh, three quick questions. So, um, the forty-sevens, top of the inbox, uh, nineteen, twenty-six, they're each coming with three mags, but it doesn't say that for the forty-seven, I assume they are also coming three magazines?
Yeah, so the nineteen are also going to be compatible with the forty-seven mags, but, uh, and also the twenty-sixes.
Okay.
Uh, but they are going to have their own magazines as, as well, yes.
Are the forty-sevens gen five?
They are gonna be gen five or two, uh, that's the.
And then last question, what the, um, uh, CMP or buyback, any, if any weapons that are purchased by the officers, CMP or?
Yes, I, I, I spoke into the representative, she's very much offensive that idea.
All right, any other discussion? Sing on, I'll vote.
Jackson?
Yes.
Marcy?
Yes.
Phil Pauski?
Yes.
Francher?
Yes.
Here's Jack.
Yes.
All right, uh, lastly, uh, Bishop, you're sort of, you and I have been working on the FDC grant, um, for the security gate access for the police department. Uh, we did submit five quotes. Um, we, the grant right now is at, uh, subject for twenty thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Um, four of the grant, uh, four of the quotes exceeded that, uh, only one of the quotes, uh, was under that price range. Um, when we were applying for the grant, we had to use the company, um, to kind of like give us an example how much the gate would cost. They came in at twenty-five thousand dollars, um, this was what, two years ago? So we were gonna reach back out to them, um, and, and see if that would still be the case. Um, if that, if so, I think that's the system that we should pursue. Uh, but we just have to, for this grant, we have to keep working towards, you know, um, actually getting the gate, so that all the guys know.
Through the chair, I'd like to add to, he is correct, he applied for this grant, probably higher than Cole or Driscoll. It was twenty-five thousand dollars, and they, the state only approved maybe twenty or twenty-two, whatever it was. So once we are approved for this, he said, let's hope the gate, well, the gates were coming in at fifty thousand dollars, that's not a bad way. So the chief does have to follow up with the equipment, just like DPW, they did a good job getting these quotes. He did not have the original submission, that was a year ago, so we do wanna reach out to them. Uh, I think the most important point is, we will probably, we will have to come back to this body once we get, because we are going to exceed the grant amount. I don't think the quotes are gonna come in for whatever it is, something in twenty dollars, so. Through the chair.
Yes.
Can we make a motion to exceed the grant amount, a certain amount?
Very good job done, I would say on the high end, exceed about, I believe, five dollars.
I'm sure you're popular, uh, we're gonna try to pick, uh.
No, I'm at four, I just don't want to see the grant, so I'm gonna make a motion.
You want, you want to make a motion that we can see about one month? You got, well, what's your?
So, the motion, you have a. I have a support?
Support.
Oh, Scott did it, oh, Francher did it, okay. And it's to a C, but I have a.
So it's a motion, you know, that question happens, how soon can this be done?
It was on for two hours, two years ago.
Yeah, we could talk. Yep, right, gee, correct, yeah, and we have the option of hitting a button or censor, censor.
The other question I have is, it's obviously electronic, what happens when it all functions?
So, yeah, we, we consider that, um, I think we do have a back gate option, um, if you do park, you know, a tow car back there, you know, where you're gonna get it for. You know, that's something that Grant has talked to the company a lot, maybe if there's a whole ride system on it.
All right, any other questions? Sing on, I'll vote.
Jackson?
Yes.
Marcy?
Yes.
Phil Pauski?
Yes.
Francher?
Yes.
Here's Jack.
Yes.
So since, since Francher you're up here, you still need a quote for security, you got Black Diamond? You need to turn that one off.
Uh, good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to be here, um, I'm a director, uh, CEO and owner of Black Diamond Security Services. Uh, we are in the company here in the city of Michigan, uh, much last spring, twenty twenty-four, uh, licensed and insured. Uh, we've done a lot of contracts, um, mainly service, uh, the eastern.
What's your problem? Well, that's hooks.
Uh, we also offer, uh, executive protection, uh, for a lot of major sweateries here, uh, in the, uh, central area. Uh, we just wrapped up doing the, uh, seasonal denial, uh, that was a couple of weeks ago, um, as well. Um, right now, we are doing the bounce house event, that's the first experience in Michigan. Um, so my, with my, my experience background in security, um, criminal business, I have a lot of experience in security. Uh, our company knows how to, um, handle, uh, third senseings. But I also believe that, uh, security is not just about, um, you know, becoming physical and, you know what I'm saying, and stuff like that. That is also goes along with customers, which you have to know how to talk to people. Uh, the people that I have that works for my company have, uh, military experience, law enforcement backgrounds, criminal justice, um, whatever happened. We always screen our employees, uh, uh, criminal backgrounds, I have national background checks as well. Um, so right now, uh, we do have events lined up where, where Volta right now for the fall. Um, uh, right now, I appreciate this opportunity to be here, I believe that we can accommodate this event for you. Our quote will be way lower than that of ten thousand dollars, um, by at least, uh, probably about five thousand, um, if you will. So our quote, right, for this event, um, if you have us, it will be about, uh, six, two hundred, I agree that, um, the previous quote, I don't think that we need air quotes, uh, quotes you guys. I believe that with our man, our man, um, if we were given a chance to, uh, provide these for, for this.
So you would have somebody there overnight watching the facility, making sure everything is secure?
Correct, and our lifeguards always check in. Uh, I also, as an owner, we also have a operations manager, um, who pop up at the sites. Uh, we keep in touch with the client, that's one of the main things, is having, uh, communication with your client. Uh, you know, being president, um, like this, because I'll say this is a little big event that we are, uh, taking on right now, that we have been, uh, the client is extremely impressed with out of, uh, Orlando, Florida. Um, I'd say you know, it's a step, so, um, I, I guess I believe you have to know how to staff these events and, um, give advice to that man. And obviously, you have a whole line of communication. Lifeguards know that if any threat arises or they have an issue with someone, law enforcement is always gonna be at work. Then we've, uh, DPD alongside DPD, right, so, uh, secret high, and we never, I don't think, ever have to get physical with anyone. Lifeguards have never had to draw a weapon or anything like that, ne- never, maybe if you can.
Here.
Black Diamond Security also offers, uh, services, civil process, we also do that, we started that work, uh, registered in the National Association of Professional Processors.
Chair, I was told, how many officers do we have each day?
Um, I didn't, uh, like get that, but I, I wasn't sure how many was provided, but however many people are needed, we can provide that, we have a larger staff.
Through the chair. Yes, um, I am looking at the hours that we would need in, which would be the four P M on Thursday until eleven P M on Sunday. And I got those hours from, directly from my name, so, um, and that's pretty much all the information I just gave you. Only the background on the carnival, festival itself, and hours that we need to study. And then we need at least two people here overnight watching the interviews and your tent. And, you know, the sound, everything, everything else. So that's all the information I gave them. I didn't have.
You know what, everybody's questions will be important.
So, uh, what kind of additional training do your officers have, kind of, against, against, and stuff like that? Training and all of that?
Yes, um, I do interviews, I guess I would conduct interviews, um, I will write applications, so everyone's gonna have an application. Um, and reference shirts, things like that, I guess that these guys are, they have a lot of, uh, history, uh, background, but they're not just like club security. Because there's a different part of doing security, there's the club, the advanced security, uh, we are different, different part, because I say executive potential, these guys have all that experience.
Do you have, uh, vehicles to, um?
Um, and vehicles are, I'd like to, to watch over, I'd give that would be in a vehicle, uh, where they would be, uh, novice, let's say, like Diamond Security Services, uh, with the stroke line, that's what most of our clients, um, other required.
Phone uniform?
Correct.
Did you have any other mind?
Uh, I don't, uh, it, it, we only provide armed when absolutely armed. Uh, we, so we know that ultimate of the size, we all, obviously, I mean, at least, but we all, we all know if this is an armed, if we need, we are, we provide that, you know, that's it.
Code three wants.
Look through all of them.
So we have armed, get our armed guard.
So can we, we, with armed, we start to change?
No, this is just a flat rate for any, uh, armed, uh.
Any other question?
Well, we're looking for, we're looking for a quote, we, we, you're giving a really cool tonight, we'll be ready to open. And, uh, you know, surprise, damage, as far as what they get from the offender that was caught here tonight.
Through the chair.
Can we have another, can we have another finish?
Thank you.
But, you know, once again, we say, oh, we wanna move on this tonight, I will.
I would like to see something in my people before.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Um, I think we have to make a decision tonight because the next meeting is the, is the day before Memorial Day.
Did you get any votes?
Uh, no, I was feeling what I got, and like, the police department got lost, I don't wanna.
Well, this would get to something that we, you can almost head on if it's up to a certain amount, because when is this body gonna, or are you gonna have a special meeting to approve it? And I wanna agree with something, as you guys said, and right, it was false, but the way you're asking, we don't have an answer, and how do you approve this? You know, it's something.
Well, could we have approved it based on his flat rate?
No.
No, no, no.
Was she finished? Thank you.
I was just saying, if we vote and approve it tonight, to go with him, based on his flat rate amount, he could submit the quote in writing to Larry, because it would be a counter. So he could submit the quote in ha- in writing to Larry tomorrow, could we do that tomorrow? So that we, you know, he makes sure he has his guys, because I don't think he has enough time. The next meeting is right before Memorial Day.
Through the chair. And we do, and we can make that contingent to, um, actually doing that, and just, it's a pipe rate. And the only way it goes through is that, you know, we actually revise that, right, and let it fly.
Okay, so I'm not saying that you're not gonna send it, but what happens if he doesn't send it, how like?
Yeah, it'll be a special.
Well, I need to know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm always.
Through the chair, public council. Through the chair, public council, right, and we just saw a special meeting right now, too, we saw all this, you've got this, the thing is, is code three, I mean, the, the quote for videos tonight. We shut that down, okay, because it didn't block that, which is still amazing, okay? And with that, we've got an underwriter here, I don't know, a person pulled here, but we gotta make sure that apples are honest.
Right, I understand that.
I'm not, I'm not saying nothing about either part.
I understand, I feel like you're suggesting that it's apples to apples, and the assistant chief is right there, he knows how many people they were gonna provide every day. As long as he communicates that, that this gentleman, and this gentleman agrees, and then his quote is not gonna be any higher, then I think you're okay.
Okay, through the chair, I got a chief, uh, can you give him, work with him, and give him the, uh, amount of people that you need, uh, comparable to code three and, uh, all the, uh. We definitely were a huge customer, I, I was that, but we also want based block beds, so that we have the best price for our residents.
Okay, absolutely, yeah, six officers on Thursday, ten on Friday, ten on Saturday, ten on.
Through the chair, is that gonna change your quote?
One, yeah.
I'm sorry, to the chair.
Yeah.
Um, it says here, you said five thousand, and then you said forty-two hundred, so.
Forty-two hundred.
Forty-two hundred?
Are, are they insured? Are you guys insured?
Yes.
To the chair. I'm gonna make a motion. To the chair, I would like to make a motion, to hire Black Diamond Security to, uh, the services for the Memorial Days.
Like this, with the amount?
The amount of forty-two hundred, that's the cap.
What?
That. To the contract seventeen, providing submitting contract, you, uh, to the program. Sorry.
By Jackson, Philipowski. Any other discussion?
Yeah. To the chair, we just need to make sure that we're providing the same services.
Yeah, so it needs to be apples to apples.
Was it, was the, was the contract bid out last year for code three? Did they bid out, and then you guys approved for code three for last year? Okay.
I used to three years.
You were just saying.
Well, no, 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 wait, the thing is, is that we did that out all on time.
Okay.
We only had one Memorial Days with code three, if you excuse the term, under my regime, or under my, my, my leadership. All right, last year, I had nothing to do with it, I, I didn't sit on council. Okay, so if it didn't go up to bed, how would we hire the people without them going out to bed? And, and, and not getting lawsuits brought upon this body?
You did all the time.
Because, you know, basically, the gentleman here, he can underbid that by forty-two hundred bucks, it provides security for that event. And the first year that we bought it, he wasn't a physicist, we paid fifty-six.
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six. And then the next year, we paid seventy-five, and then the last year, it's like a nine, sorry, the last year, we paid how much?
Yeah, last year was seventy, it was fifty-six in twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
Seventy-nine in twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
And the bid this year was ninety-seven hundred.
And he's underbid that by half, that's why it's very important for eighty-five to put this stuff off the bid. You know, residents are sitting here, they need to have that, you know, I mean, that's what we're here for, is to take one. And keep our voices there, all right? And to the chair, I think we'll be able to have more chairs and M S P this year, and, yeah, last year, I mean, okay, let's, yeah, now we should be better, you know, we, we definitely have enough. To, to the chair, Wayne County Sheriff right now, behind, in our hallway, and they made the statement multiple times, that they would handle all of security. Now we have, we have to get code three, or we have to get an outside entity, so why, we want our residents to be safe. But Wayne County comes to us and wanted to propose, they took their law. And we could be, not only sworn officers, officers that carry a badge and a gun, I'm saying you guys don't, when you coach them. The bad officers that carry a badge and a gun every day, they're at the Wayne County level. All right.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, Hubble? Jackson?
Yes.
Marcy?
Yes.
Filipowski?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Here it goes.
Yes.
Thank you. Kelly Bailey, for Cassius and for the, for the, so, Matt, thank you.
Do you remember me? I, I, you can, you can tell me.
I'll be a little further. Um, since you're, uh, uh, you're, uh, you're, uh, here tonight, we only need a bit of information on the, that, you guys, you said you have more information. Next to yourself, all of you, that part, Marshall, um, testing pressure on hydrants, um, Rob, Mel, Del, and Ashley, a couple came under a little low on pressure, and they're concerned about, because they have.
Can you ask them, I had a resident contact me, and he said that he's a complimentary into her hydrant, and they haven't done in a couple years. And I think I talked to, I don't, I think it was Kelly, um, that comes to, they, she said they don't do all of them, but.
Well, we, we do check every hydrant every year.
Okay.
But if there are some hydrants on private property, like, sort of business, we can't, we can't check those.
Okay, so.
But if they're on the list, she's gonna check before it, maybe she's gonna see them, like, come up, check it, like, we, every, let's actually pull out of this. All of our young guys complain that we send them up and check hydrants, so they water your, your check hydrants.
Okay, so all the hydrants are getting checked in the city?
Yes, they should be, absolutely.
Okay. All right, that would work or not?
Okay.
Thank you. All right, I'll go first, and one or two. Then, how are you?
I'll see.